There we go, yeah.
Everybody ready? Here we go. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday, March 5th. Doesn't feel like March, does it? March 5th, 2019, meeting of the Edina City Council. Roll call, please, Ms. Allison.
Member Anderson?
Here.
Member Brindle?
Here.
Member Staunton?
Here.
Member Fisher?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here.
We have a form of meeting agenda in front of us this evening. Manager Neil, anything you wish to modify on the agenda?
Yes, Your Honor, there is. It is part of item, part of item 8C. We've had a question from one of the vendors regarding how staff computed residential recycling costs that we're presenting to you tonight. The question is substantial enough that we feel it's, we want to recommend to you that we not award the residential recycling element of that contract tonight. Give us time to hear this vendor out and come back to you at our next council meeting with recommendation. If the council wishes, we could handle the entire item like that, or we could go forward with awarding the organics collection piece tonight. That part of it, we don't, we don't have any concerns about the organics contract award, but the recycling piece of it, we would recommend we not award tonight and table that.
All right. So if I look at item 8C, it seems to me that we could just use a portion of that first line, the motion to approve staff recommendations for organics collection, strike the remainder of that language. It's more guiding in nature, I guess.
Yeah.
Or, and if we look at actually C, just approve recommendation for residential organics collection?
Unless, unless you feel as a, as a group, like, you want to put those together and approve them together, there's some nexus, there is a nexus of them being together, so I understand if that's the way you want to do it.
All right. Is there any immediacy to the organic side of it?
No.
It does feel to me like it's, they're kind of connected as part of a bigger strategy.
Okay.
If they're, if it's not an urgency, I'd...
We can do it both on the 19th?
Okay.
Then the, then the staff could spend one night instead of two.
We're happy to spend as many nights here as you wish.
I'm sure you are.
Yeah.
Any other recommendations on modification of the agenda?
That's it.
All right. Entertain a motion to table 8C to a date to be determined by staff?
We would say the 19th.
Do it on the 19th?
19th.
Okay.
Second?
We got a motion, second, to postpone 8C, table 8C until the 19th of March 2019. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, posed, carried. And then, we have the balance of the meeting agenda. Anyone else wish to modify the agenda? Otherwise, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the amended agenda as discussed.
Second?
Motion, second, to adopt the amended agenda. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
P posed, carried. All right. We are next on to community comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not otherwise related to anything on the agenda this evening? Ms. Costellano, you want to come forward? And while Ms. Costellano's on the way up, we've got several government class, classes here this evening. All the government students want to stand up? We'll get you on television. And we'll leave you standing just long enough so everybody gets scanned carefully, and then... And then you can tell your parents, "See, I was there, I was there. Go, go look it up on, on the Edina website." Okay, thanks, folks. All right. Ms. Costellano, welcome.
Thank you. And just a preface, I think this will be okay. It's about the comp plan, but I think the design guidelines are, would be a separate issue from this, so...
All right.
Okay. Roberta Costellano, 4854 France Avenue South, Mayor and City Council. I'm here tonight to ask that the city post online the current version of the citywide comprehensive plan, and I will explain. Sometimes in life, there's a destination and you need directions for how to get there. After establishing the destination point, the inevitable next question is, where is your starting point? The problem is that if you don't know where you are now, if you don't know where you're starting from, then how do you know whether or not you're already at the destination? You need to know where you are right now. There's a similar situation impacting the comprehensive planning process, specifically with the citywide 10-year comp plan update that is scheduled to be publicly released this week, and also with the 50th and France Small Area Plan, abbreviated SAP, which was released on February 22nd. A copy of the 2008 comp plan is posted on the city's website. However, it appears to me that the document which is posted is the 2008 comp plan as adopted in 2008. But during the past decade, there have been amendments to that comp plan, and therefore the currently valid form of the comp plan is the comp plan as amended through to the present. To return to the analogy, the 2008 comp plan as adopted in 2008 is like Point A, but we're no longer at Point A. We are now living at Point B with the comp plan as amended. The city is proposing that we move to Point C. In order to analyze the city's Point C proposal and provide informed feedback, we need to have ready access to the starting point B, the comp plan as amended. As a resident of the White Oaks neighborhood, my focus has been on the 50th and France SAP. There's been some difficulty in analyzing and comparing the current comp plan and proposed SAP for density, and I've identified discrepancies related to height, and I should say, the currently posted comp plan. I would like to describe this example. Last year, I asked Chris in Planning about building height restrictions in the 50th and France district. I was told that the limit was four stories, and I was directed to a document online called the Building Height Overlay Districts, also known as Appendix A. Appendix A also describes a four-story limit throughout the district, the same as the 2008 comp plan as adopted in 2008. And yet, in 2017, the city voted to amend the comp plan and the city code in order to permit the construction of the six-story Nolan Maines complex. Therefore, a portion of the 50th and France district is actually currently six stories in the comp plan and in city code, but this is not reflected in the comp plan posted online. In this case, accuracy is important because the council's approval of six stories set a precedent that future developers are likely to demand as a minimum height for their own proposals. In closing, I ask that the council would direct the posting of the currently valid comp plan as amended, incorporating maps describing current height and density for online viewing by all as we continue to work through the comp plan and SAP processes. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Costellano. We'll take that up with staff, yes. Thank you. You can tender that to the clerk, please. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them? It's not otherwise on the agenda this evening? All right. Seeing no one coming forward, we're going to move on to the city manager's response to community comments that were made at prior meetings.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had two comments that were made at our prior meeting, and actually, we have happened to address both of them at the prior meeting. But as a reminder, one was regarding the wastewater treatment plant number five and the, the process of, of how we selected the particular site at the Dublin Reservoir, and then what we plan to do in terms of public engagement around that issue. We, at that point, asked the council to consider taking a pause on that issue. Director Milliner and I have been kind of talking back and forth about when to, when to come back and then reengage the council on, on the process, and really kind of backing up to the point where we talk about what was the purpose of, of the plant in the first place, what we were trying, what were we trying to accomplish, looking at the various sites that were considered during that process, what were their pros and cons. So really, at this matter for us, it's a calendaring issue and trying to find a, a time in your calendar where we could have that discussion in a work, in a work session, and then advance that discussion that evening back into a city council setting where we could have more of that presentation on a televised basis. So that was part of it. And the second, second speaker was, again, a question about the 50th and France Small Area Plan and the, and how we, how we advertise meetings, how we conducted meetings, and what the process would be for sharing the meeting calendar from here on out for that process. And we talked a little bit about that online last week too, or two weeks ago.
Good. Thank you for that update. Did that prompt any need for inquiry or request for inquiry by any council member? Manager Neil? Okay. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We've got 11 items on the consent agenda this evening. Is there anyone on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? Otherwise, we'll entertain, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as shown.
Some of.
Second, is there a second?
Second.
We got a motion, second, to approve the consent agenda as shown. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Member Brindle?
So, I didn't take this off because I didn't intend to really talk about it, but item E regards an MOU between the Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force and the City of Edina. And there is a, an advisory communication from the Human Rights and Relations Commission that is in regard to K-12 compliance with state and federal sexual harassment and sex discrimination laws, Title IX. And is, is any, I suppose, is anything about Title IX referenced in the Crimes Against Children in the MOU with the police department? Are they completely separate?
Completely unrelated, yeah.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure that they are unrelated before we vote on this. Okay.
Thank you.
Good. All right. With that clarification, we have a motion and a second with regard to the adoption of the consent agenda. All those in favor of adopting the consent agenda as shown, say aye.
Aye.
P posed, carried. The next portion of the agenda is special recognitions and presentations. We have none this evening. That takes us to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We have one public hearing matter in front of us this evening, and that is a public hearing with regard to the proposed Greater Southdale District Design Experience Guidelines. And Director Teague will introduce the topic, and we have some, some guests here that are going to help guide us through this process. So, Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council. As you know, over the last four years, we've had a group of Edina residents and Edina business and community leaders that have been working on the Greater Southdale area district plan. We essentially broke it into two documents, the district plan, that's already been approved by the city council, and what's in front of you this evening, the Design Experience Guidelines. That group was led by co-chairs Michael Schroeder, who's here this evening, and Colleen Wolf. We had two consultants assist us, Mick Johnson, who's going to present the design guidelines this evening, and Dan Cornejo, who did the district plan. But, so this is a culmination of four years' work, a lot of work that's gone into this. And the idea with the Design Experience Guidelines is for development projects that come before us, this is the tool that we will use to evaluate rezoning requests, comprehensive plan amendments, those types of things. So with that, I will introduce Mick Johnson, who is going to run you through the Design Experience Guidelines.
Good. Thank you, Director Teague. Mr. Johnson, welcome.
Nice to see you.
And I think I will also have you identify yourself and your, your company affiliation and your business address, just so we have that for the record.
My name is Mick Johnson. I'm a design principal for Architecture Field Office. It's located at 2200 Zane Avenue North in Golden Valley. You ready? We good? Okay. Mayor Hovland, members of the council. I'd like to give just a brief overview of what we've been working on, and sort of the outcome of the work effort, a little bit about background and context. As Carrie mentioned, been working on this for, it seems like forever, but four or five years, beginning with the Phase One, which was the district working principles, followed by the district urban design framework. We spent a great deal of time on that to sort of organize our thinking about the district in a, in a much more broader way, primarily through physical kinds of comparisons to other places, and how those would fit perhaps into the district urban plan. And then Phases Three and Four, we then focused on the Design Experience Guidelines in conjunction with the district plan. Guidelines are really a companion to the district plan, and they outline a kind of high-level planning and design strategies for the public realm. And it's really important to understand that those are part of a larger sort of set of things that, that we'll get into. The, the guidelines are also a baseline guidance. They're not, it's really there to enhance a conversation, to lead us into issues, all of us into issues that would concern the district from a design perspective, a development perspective. Keep in mind that the, the companion documents really is the Greater Southdale District Plan, and it's Section Four that really gets, or should be taken as one kind of review. So you get into the economic vitality and urban design, land use, and parks and public life, sustainability, water resources, all those things, and you really need to look at those at the same time. And then the Experience Guidelines are really about the placemaking through the lens of experience. And we thought that that was really the, the primary way to get at what the issues were and how to structure it that really informed how this would affect residents and how that would, in fact, create a kind of commonality from one district or one part of the district to the other in terms of the overall design experience. So, we use the, the notion of a street room as kind of the primary kind of vehicle to understand how this would work in a variety of different ways. And what we mean by street room is if you look at the slide on the left, you can see a cornice and lighting overhead that kind of defines a volume that is really very intimate. It's not about the buildings above, but it's about the activities, the kind of transparency you see on the street. The one on the left, or the one on the right, excuse me, is about limiting certain buildings within that, the height of those buildings within that sort of street room. Other things are important to that, and that's become sort of the furniture of a standard street, like trees and planters and other things that would serve the public, public realm. You can see in this one, this image on the left, paving is an important part of defining what that street room might be like. In this case, you see buildings that are two and three stories, rows of trees, and again, the, the public realm being defined in terms of the furniture by bollards and, and kinds of other support things, that bicycle stanchions and that sort of thing, stanchions that, that people would need. On the right, again, you see one room where there's just a, again, a kind of simple, narrow street, and then the one below it is defined more by a kind of festival, kind of winter time, street. There are other examples, when you get into larger-scale buildings, you can see in the Whole Foods, and this is in Seattle, on Westlake, that the base is three and four stories. Taller buildings are held back, so the lower buildings really define the experience. You can also see that on South Nicollet Mall, where the buildings that, on the Target side, the Target store, which is in the center, the red brick, and the Target Headquarters buildings, the taller portions of the buildings are stepped back so that the, the three and four-story buildings really shape the experience of the room, along with Young Cleveland and other historic buildings within that district. So it's really about making sure that the scale is right for the kind of experience that you want. The, the most important part of the whole approach to the experience is, oh, how do you organize that? And we chose a 200-foot grid that we learned a great deal about from Portland, Oregon. And the 200-foot grid organizes things so that building blocks are 200-foot square. That means that streets happen every 200 feet. That means street rooms happen every 200 feet. You really don't get the long buildings, so you get a much denser network of pedestrian opportunities knitted together by all sorts of things that relate to landscaping, fewer cars need to go through these spaces, all the things that make the district a lot more inviting. We then looked at potential to building, building sites, and, and those are represented in pink, and it gives you an idea, there's a lot of land available in the district that needs to be organized in some way. Overweigh that then with the grid, and you start to see the number of block buildings that might occur. And it's important to note that that's the framework that then starts, begin to connect, but we don't see all of those kind of red spaces as car spaces. They're just as important to be seen as green spaces that could, in fact, be pocket parks or be really just places for people and not cars, because we have a very robust network of primary and secondary streets already in the district. It's important to recognize that connections are a part of this, and they need to be seen as an aspect of how you really connect intersections and incorporate street, the street typologies that you'll see soon, or incorporate green systems, how you connect to the north-south promenades in terms of sensitivity and transition to single-family residential neighborhoods, how we manage stormwater. Stormwater is an important part of, of the whole district, and it could be daylighted, so it is a part of the experience rather than being buried. It, connections will increase the number of sidewalks, pathways, smaller parks and gardens to access mobility. Just a few of the things as it relates to connections. Intersections, the street room typologies connect those intersections throughout the district, and we're, what we're doing is linking experiences together. So from one kind of typology to the next, then the intersection becomes primary. The street room typologies with lower facades, they take precedent. And so you see in the photograph in the lower right, a taller building, but the lower part of it is really part of another lower-scale district or street. And we want to make sure that we're always thinking about scale. The architecture of facades of one building, making up the intersection should be conceived as part of the corners of, of the whole intersection. So we have to then look at intersections as a room in itself, but also as a gateway or as a threshold into the next room. The form of the street room, it means that along all major corridors, 75% of the face of the building has to get up to that, that street room edge. If we have a lot of gaps in it, then it won't read, and we will lose that sense of space and what it's really meant to do. New building facades in the district must have 75% transparency. You need to be able to see in as well as see out, and it makes it safer, makes it more comfortable, makes it more inviting. All building facades are prime. There are no backsides to any of these buildings, which means that they must be then designed in a way to be as good of architecture as the front side of a building. They're really, all four sides matter. All facades on the first vertical, 60 feet of building, what we mean by the first vertical, we have a, a series of height limits, should use natural materials facing the public realm. And it's important to start thinking about what the kinds of materials we want to have in the district that add a sense of continuity, a sense of history, and making sure that it's not materials that are too trendy, because then it, they may fail to create the kind of continuity that we want. And then, no building facade can be any longer than 200 feet. We've all seen buildings that are 300 and 400 feet long, and it's the same thing for 300 and 400 feet. And what we want is a much richer kind of district where buildings don't exceed that limit, so you get a variety of architecture, and you get an experience then along that architecture that's more inviting and more interesting. And then finally, building form, above-grade parking structures should be lined with programmable public space. We shouldn't be allowing anything that, that doesn't have something to do with the public realm and with the experience of the public realm. All development services, mechanical systems, all need to be located either within the building or should not be visible from the public realm. And that's not a hard thing to do, it just needs to get done. Building footprints above 60 feet, that's that datum, should be no greater than 12,000 feet for residential and 24,000 for commercial. When you think about a 12,000 square footprint on a 200 by 200-foot block, that's only 30% of the block. And what that means then is the kind of shadow that that, that taller element of the architecture will cast is like a sundial. It just moves quickly, it doesn't block the whole experience of other people's sort of life in that, in that street. You can also imagine, if you have a series of those, it's like clouds moving across a sunny day. Shadows move quickly. So the guidelines have a series of street typologies. There is actually, let's see, what is there? There's, I always get this, eight, nine, I forget the top one. Transition zones, there's a West Promenade, and I'll go through each of these. And then there's a West Promenade South, there's a little bit of differences in, in some of those streets. The East Promenade is really against Richfield on York. The Cornelia overlay is a special influence on France Avenue between 69th and Gallagher, so that there are influences that are unique to that district and that neighborhood. And the purple is a new local streets. Number four, the blue is a primary east-west streets. Those really connect the neighborhoods through the district from east to west, from Richfield all the way to Cornelia and on up to, towards Highway 100. Number five is the boulevards, those are the primary streets. So you get Minnesota Drive and 77th all the way to 66th, and then you get France and York. Those are really the big, big streets of the district. And then you get the central promenade spine. And we've extended that from, if you look at it from where it is today, at Centennial Lakes and the promenade, it really ends at Hazelton Road, and we want to extend that all the way to Struck Howard Park, through the Southdale Mall District and on to the park, and then going west all the way to Fred Richards and to Highway 100. So the district is then, has a very strong both north-south and east-west connections through it. The transition zones are really critical. You can look at the ones on Cornelia, on the, in the white green, between, on Valley View, to Parkland Avenue. That's, it's really an important part of making that transition through the district, and then again, at Richfield, between York and Xerxes. So if you look at typology 1A, this is a transition to the Cornelia neighborhood. The images on the right sort of give you an idea of the expectation of scale of buildings. If you go from single-family residences on the west side, there's a limit on the primary promenade, West Promenade, on the, on the west side of the promenade is 36 feet, on the east side is 50 feet. And so there's a gradual transition and scale, both in the kinds of architecture you would expect, but also the height of the buildings all the way to France Avenue. And at France, it's a height of 60 feet. If you look at the typology then, 1B, which is... If you look at the typology then 1B, which is a continuation of the west promenade, and then as you get into the south, it's a little bit denser area, it has less of the impact of the Cornelia neighborhood. Again, then it is at 50 feet, which is a carry from the previous promenade, and then it steps back. So you maintain the scale of buildings that are at 50-foot in height along that whole stretch of the promenade, in particular on the east side. The 1C is Xerxes. It's a little bit different residential characteristic. You can see the image on the right, but it does hold, again, the 36-foot height limit, and then steps back, and the building steps back again, 20 feet up to eventually 60 feet, and then another step takes you back to taller buildings. Again, trying to reflect a gentler kind of scale transition from the single-family neighborhood. Typology 2 is the Cornelia overlay on France, which I mentioned. This means that the east side of France Avenue should maintain that 60-foot height limit so that there's a gradual transition again from single-family houses that penetrates then deeper into the France experience. We would expect, though, that those buildings on that overlay on the east side of France would be always at 60 feet. The typical typology 3, which is new local streets in purple, you can't really predict what all those streets are going to be, but if you take examples of the 60-foot-wide streets in Portland, you see a variety of buildings on, or the kind of open space that you might get between buildings that is 60-foot wide, saying that a lot of that might have traffic, most of it would be green. If we look at it, the building scale will vary, and we're hoping for innovation and clear thinking about how that might work. But again, remember that the footprint itself above 60 feet is 12,000 square feet, so it's not going to dominate everything as it does in many cases today. Typology Room 4 is the primary east-west streets. We expect those to be boulevard-related, to be very comfortable, to be treed. There is a significant step back along the edge of that at 60 feet. Again, that would then go for anything above the 12,000-foot, square foot limit. And then the boulevards on France, York, 77th, 66th, and Minnesota Drive. We always looked at the Champs-Elysees, same size, 200-foot building face to building face, double rows of trees, wide sidewalks, a variety of activities that can happen along those kinds of streets. We think that's really important for the relief across the whole district in terms of the character of these rooms as opposed to the other more neighborhood-like rooms. This is the public room in terms of its street character and stretches through the district. And then finally, typology 6, central promenade. We'd imagine that that would be full of landscape, water, activities, other important kinds of cultural activities that might happen along the promenades, either east and west or north and south. We expect that the building should step back, starting again at 36 feet, stepping back at 60 feet before you get taller buildings. So it creates a pretty open kind of valley experience in terms of the quality of light in all of those. So to close, 10 things to remember. Every new development ends with a 200-foot square block. I mean, it's going to vary because we have no control over all of the property, but that's a place to begin. Every block or building in the development needs connect between, needs streets to connect between buildings. Buildings will not be greater than 200 feet in length. Building footprints above 60 feet in height are limited in square footage. All streets are not equal. We want them to all have a character that is unique to that part of the district. Designated transition zones are about maintaining quality of life. We want to ensure that the quality of life in the neighborhoods, you know, has a smooth transition both in scale, kinds of buildings, heights, and others that match the kind of qualities that are in those existing neighborhoods. The promenades and east-west streets are the bridge. Those promenades are really a mix of pedestrians first, and then bicycles, then cars, and then service vehicles, all need to be in that space. But that's what, the kind of definition of Wernhof and other building street typologies that are similar are there for. Number eight, intersections, lower building height should prevail. I always want to make sure that if you come into an intersection, say, from the Cornelia neighborhood, that you, that four-story kind of scale maintains dominance. And number nine, within the first 60 feet of a building, primary tools should be traditional or natural. And build character through the district that has identity, that's part of the whole district, but uniqueness to each street room. And then transparency at the ground level facing the public realm is key. No blank walls. Everybody sees what's going on. There's a dialogue there that's really important between those people inside and people outside, and vice versa. Thank you.
Mr. Fisher?
Quite a succinct presentation of four years of work, I'd say. It's just really, really a special piece of work by everybody that was involved in it, and we've lauded everybody involved. You haven't been here for all of those hymns of praise, but you certainly deserve, you and your office, Farah, you deserve accolades as well for the fine guidance that you gave all of us, I think, on this work. Member Fisher, did you have anything that you wanted to comment on?
I just wanted to ask about, so, one of my notes was earlier in the document, talk about natural materials, but in that last piece, the last slide that was up, it actually kind of defined that. Because I think there is a need to make sure we're sort of defining what we mean by natural, because there are a lot of materials that sort of mimic natural materials and, you know, just sort of, and not that we want to pin it down that tight, but I'm assuming you're talking about stones and bricks would be a natural material and...
Tile.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And one of the questions I had noted when I was reading through the document was this whole notion of intersections and different heights when they meet at an intersection. I think I've pretty much got it now, how that would work. I guess my question to you is, all of this sounds great. And I'm assuming that you've sort of modeled physically what that might, what some of those blocks might look like, that 200-foot block, you know, especially I think about the, I'm thinking on the east side of France Avenue, where there might be more pressure for taller buildings at some point, and it happens to be on an east-west street, one of these new east-west streets where we want to keep the heights lower. Do you feel comfortable that you could still get some amount of density on some of those prime blocks and still meet all of these requirements?
Yes, we do. I mean, and so the real way to measure this is to look at the whole district and imagine that there's a 60-foot height limit across the whole district. And so that means that in any intersection, you're really buying between four stories and six stories, somewhere in that range. And that's a measurable thing, that so a four-story and a six-story building in an intersection is a pretty comfortable result. Because above 60 feet, then, we want those larger components of buildings to be set back away from that public realm experience. So you get the intersections, you shouldn't have a building that's dominant on the intersection. So you keep density where you need density, but you keep scale where scale is really important to give that sense of comfort and consistency throughout the district.
Okay. My other question, and I don't know if you have any way of answering this, I think about the Guitar Center site that, you know, we approved, I don't know how long ago. But I'd be curious, if you were to apply these design experience guidelines today to that project, how far off is, I mean, does it meet some of these guidelines? I'm just trying to visualize that.
It does meet some of the guidelines, but I think you would push the tower away from the promenade further.
Would have pushed it, that was my recollection.
You would push it west, right.
Yeah, in that case, that was a super narrow site, so it would have been an interesting deal. But that's the key difference, I think, we would have, I think we're missing one step. Had we had these guidelines in place, we probably would have gotten a little bit of a different form.
We'd have gotten a different form, and that would have opened up the sort of valley, if you will, of that kind of experience as you walk through the promenade. And then trees will eventually dominate that lower scale, which is what we really want. And then the higher building, if it stepped back far enough, then kind of goes away. It isn't there any longer. Those are the kinds of experiences that keep things in, sort of, in check. And it's the kind of way in which you can then measure how you might imagine what it's going to be like in 10, 15, 20 years, as trees grow and other things sort of take over.
Okay. And my last thing is really just a comment, and I want to applaud you and the whole committee that worked on this. Just the way, you know, because height and density and all those things become such powerful conversation pieces. But the way you presented, you know, the street room concept, and just the elegant way you just presented these concepts, I think is really terrific. Because we can all sit here and sort of visualize, and you helped us visualize what this might be or could feel like, without just talking about, we're allowing 60 feet, you know, because it's not about that, it's about how that space feels when you're in those public places. And I think you did a really terrific job explaining that tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Member Brindle?
Thank you. It has been, I think, like a four-year learning experience to just, and really an experience of appreciation of all of the thoughtful time and effort that's gone into this, that on the sidelines, I feel like I've kind of been on the sidelines but looking in on the process. And I really appreciate the care and now the product that we have to show for, for the work. It's an excellent document. So when I look at the 200-by-200-foot squares, the piece of it that is referenced, but I guess I'd like more definition of, because we're defining the buildings, we're defining the experience of being in the midst of buildings, but how did we get there? How did we cross France Avenue? How did we cross York Avenue? Did we cross at grade, or do we envision something? I sent an email to Michael Schroeder with a dream that I have. And do we, do we take bicyclists and pedestrians and put them on a different plane than vehicles and completely separate their experience from the vehicular experience for safety reasons, but also for the experience of doing that? And where is the best place to do it? Is it at the trail? Is it at some of those busier points? But that's the piece of it for me that will tie it all together is, I'm going to walk from my house on Southdale Road, and I'm going to walk east. And how comfortable is that going to be? And how long will it take me to get to my destination? Will I feel safe doing it? Once I get to my destination, I'm in the midst of, you know, looking into the future. I'm in the midst of this new neighborhood of a variety of land uses, building types. But I want that, I want that personal experience to be something that takes me from one place to another, and that I want to repeat and repeat and repeat. So as I, as I look at this document, I think about, okay, put me, put me on crossing France, put me crossing York. I know people who work, who live at the West End who drive to CVS to get their prescriptions filled, because they're not comfortable crossing York. They're not comfortable right on their own block for traffic reasons. So those are the things that I'm left with, that, and maybe it's putting this into practice that helps us to understand and build into that, that interactive environment. But, let's see. That's, that's, that's the biggest takeaway I had from it, is that there's such a definition of the area and how it's put together, and less of a definition on how I get there. So that, I guess I'd like your thoughts on that before I ramble on any further.
Councilmember Brindle, I think there's, there's an important part that we need to focus on going forward, and that's how we restructure the intersections. The intersections today have a couple white lines. They have some pretty vicious turn lanes onto east-west streets. They have a lot of fast traffic. They really aren't owned by pedestrians. And the way pedestrians can own them, if we change the material, if we widen, you know, the experience of walking across, if we make sure that those intersections are really well-lit, that we eliminate the turn lanes so nobody is, you know, going fast to make a right when you're stepping off the curb, everybody stops, pedestrians rule the intersection, and then traffic can move again. And I think those are, across the whole district, need to be looked at very carefully, and I think we need to add intersections. I mean, if we start looking at, you know, cities that are really comfortable for walking, there's multiple places to cross France. And right now, you can go between 1,200 and 1,600 feet and not find a place to cross. And we need to work on how to get the county on board with changing the way that system works so that it's really an easy place for bicyclists and pedestrians to cross, feel safe, and make it part of the experience of going from one kind of space to the next. And that's a whole, I think, study in itself and needs a great deal of attention to really bring France and York and 66th into the district as a part of the experience.
Right. So we've got three intersections that were upgraded with, with crosswalks and better curb cuts and wider crosswalks, better curb cuts, lighting, decorative lighting, and boulevard plantings. And one thing, you don't have this answer, I don't have this answer, but I'd like to know what's the next phase of upgrading some of the other, what's the next three intersections on France to, to do that to? Whether it's Hazelton and 69th and Parklawn, maybe? And those are heavily used pedestrian intersections because of the destinations on both sides of those intersections. So, so those are my comments. Just a final anecdote, I guess, and that is that at your suggestion and just continually talking about Portland, we did, my husband and I did spend some time in Portland to get the experience of Pearl, the Pearl District. And that was very helpful, to understand the commonality that you get from a tree-lined street, where the architecture and the age of the buildings are all completely different. And the building materials are completely different, but you don't feel that at all because what you are part of is a tree-lined street that has grace, it moves with you, and it really, it really was a learning experience for us, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Member Anderson?
Thank you. Just a couple of comments quickly. The public realm areas as presented are fascinating. So I absolutely concur with Member Brindle on complimenting you on how that's presented and drafted. On your street room typology 2, the Cornelia overlay zone, you note here that the understanding is that there's special sensitivity related to new building development near the Cornelia neighborhood. And I appreciate... And I appreciate that statement and taking that into consideration. That residential neighborhood will probably experience the most in terms of construction and movement and change as they go about their daily life. West side of 100, probably not so much. And so as this moves forward, even though you may not be an absolute mover and shaker in that construction piece, it's just something to keep in mind going forward, that the sensitivities of that neighborhood and those homeowners are recognized. Also, just a question, design experience guideline as compared to form-based design, how would you compare those two concepts?
Well, I think there's some commonalities in terms of creating a dimensional kind of form that everybody needs to fit into, but this is pretty open-ended in terms of the architecture, because it allows the architecture to really be a kind of dominant feature of the public realm experience. But it also says, you know, you've got to cut it off at a certain point and push the rest of your building back. But the reason why we don't get into form-based, I think, is it takes away innovation.
I'm sorry?
It takes away innovation.
I see.
And what you'd like to do is sit down with architects and engineers and planners and thinkers about, you know, what's the newest way to solve some of our problems? And let the guidelines sort of be that conversation piece initially, to talk about what the issues are, and then let's get our heads together and do something innovative that sort of solves maybe performative problems that a developer may have, but it also solves some really important problems about connecting our neighborhood streets together more effectively. And so we wanted to minimize as much as possible the kind of form-based language and really get it back to what's the experience going to be like, and how do you maximize that experience?
I see. So to restate that, it's really essentially more freedom, more latitude in a design experience guideline. Would you think that form-based design is more applicable in smaller sites, opposed to larger sites?
I've seen it used in both, you know, large sites and small sites, so I think it can be used either way. What I like about what we've done with the experience guidelines, I can imagine that can be used for the next 30 years as a way of forming the district, and form-based guidelines run out of gas eventually in terms of building development. And so we're looking for, again, a way in which this is going to help that district evolve in a more organic way, a more natural way.
Sure. It's a matter of, I guess, having a measure of control and a measure of quality control, excellence in design and presentation as we go through the process of changing our neighborhoods and city.
That's right. You've got to, you have to ask architects and engineers to step up to this.
Thank you.
By way of example, on use of the guidelines, and I think on page, well, in your preface, you called this baseline guidance. We had the advantage of having these available to us in an earlier form when we were contemplating 7200 and 7250 in the preliminary approval process that we went through at this council level. There was some slight variance on what was being proposed by the applicant as opposed to what was suggested in the baseline guidance document that we're looking at tonight. And I thought, Michael Schroeder did a nice job of explaining under what circumstances you can have variance from the baseline guidance document, which is what we're looking at tonight. And I'm wondering if you had any observations, because we had your observations in writing twice, I think, with respect to 7200 and 7250. Think about this, think about that, and you had some very good suggestions in there. But nonetheless, we were at slight variance with what the guidelines show. So it might be worthwhile for you to comment on the notion that these are baseline guides that we're looking at tonight as opposed to absolute rules.
Right. So for example, a couple of things come to mind is that we'll probably never find a piece of property that can be divided into 200-foot square blocks evenly. So that means it's going to be 220, or it's going to be 180, or it might get up to 230. And so that's going to have an influence on the shape of the building, obviously. I think one of the important things, though, that I think was hard on 7250 and 7200, was the notion that the street, the Wunneuf, the east-west promenade, should be 60 feet. You know, I saw it sometimes at 90 feet, you know, with, you know, grass in the middle of it and a bunch of other things, which is a nice idea, but in fact, that could very easily kind of destroy the room experience. And it also puts space in the wrong place. And part of the guidance is to put the right space in the right place, so it really does serve the public interests. And sometimes developments will serve their own interests before they serve the public interest, and that can be driven by, you know, marketing, can be driven by style, it could be driven by a want to cover something up, or get a little bit more space for parking, or whatever. And so the guidance really is to ask that question, okay, is the street too wide, and what are you really putting in it? And is that really where it should be? Or should we have something else that goes here that really meets closer to the guideline, and we can take whatever you were thinking about and contribute that to some other part of the project, that it allows a greater sort of public need being met? So that's, I think, how I would answer that.
Good. Let's hope. That prompt anything else from any council members? Otherwise, this is a public hearing matter. Mr. Johnson, if you'll stand by, you may be coming back up to answer some further questions, but I'm going to open it up for public testimony. So if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to come up and comment regarding the proposed adoption by the council, that has been approved by the Planning Commission, now in front of us, the Greater Southdale District Design Experience Guidelines, if anyone wishes to come up, you'll have three minutes to make your comments. Feel free to come forward, give us your name and address, and you'll get a yellow light when you have 30 seconds left, and then you should be thinking about wrapping up your comments as the red light comes on.
We have a couple of visuals to post tonight. Good evening. I'm Bob Guberud, live at 4421 Ellsworth Drive, approximately six blocks west of the 7200 and 7250 France Avenue project. I appreciate this opportunity to come to speak to you. There are two reasons for my speaking tonight. Having lived here for 48 years, I thought I was fairly familiar with the territory of the Greater Southdale District, but I was having trouble dictating with the divine experience guidelines, but Mr. Johnson just took the wind out of my sails, because all the streets are named on the maps that he showed tonight, and that was, I was having trouble with, I couldn't see the names of the streets, or I didn't know if it was north or south, and so that problem is solved. So I thank you, but reason for being here, number one, has been taken off the docket. Reason number two is my concern for the implications of the West Promenade and transonation to the Cornelia neighborhood on page 20. I believe that would be the next one, Jennifer, if you please. Okay, thank you. The West Promenade is described on page 20 as "the new north-south pedestrian bike and vehicle street Wunneuf that accommodates service access is envisioned between France Avenue and the Cornelia neighborhood." My concern is that the proposed West Promenade incorporates vehicles with pedestrians and bikes, and this is quite different from the East Promenade, which we sometimes refer to as a Centennial Lakes Promenade, which features separate bike and pedestrian paths, and frankly, and thankfully, no vehicles. I happen to frequently bike on both the north and south in east and west pass, which is becoming, is a very non-threatening experience, because there are no vehicles, and it can become therefore very enjoyable. My perception is that mixing of vehicles with bikes and pedestrians is an invitation for accidents, particularly with children. I have personal experience, having been hit twice by distracted drivers while biking in my own neighborhood, so I've had some very personal and painful experience with that. And we know that vigilance is required by both bike riders and pedestrians, however, moving vehicles in such close proximity, you know, in my view, are a formidable hazard. So it appears conclusive and wiser to me to adopt the model of the existing East Promenade, only bikes and pedestrians. Also, to separate vehicles, I would therefore recommend that the design and use of the promenades be exclusively for pedestrian and bike usage. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Guberud.
Arnie Bigby, 7621 Edinburgh Way. I hadn't planned on coming here to comment tonight, but this is my neighborhood we're talking about, and being a resident of Edina, I love my neighborhood, I love the city of Edina and all the things that we do here. I also am very interested in livable communities and affordable housing. One of the things that I do is to try to follow up on that. I attended online a webinar today on livable communities, and it's called Strong Towns. And it's a concept that some of you may be familiar with, maybe you've read books or heard stories about that. But one of the key components of that is meeting people in your neighborhoods where they are, and finding out what it is they're concerned about. And I know in my neighborhood, we have a lot of retirees living along York Avenue and some of the high-rises, and they're in wheelchairs, they're in electric vehicles that take them on sidewalks to get to where they go, whether it's CVS. By the way, CVS runs the Target pharmacy now, so from the West End to Target, they don't have to cross York Avenue. Just a point for somebody who made a comment earlier, there's an easy way to get there. So meeting people in strong towns where they are and solving the problems they have, having the snow and the ice clear so that there's a dry sidewalk to go on with your cane or your crutches or your, you know, your electric wheelchair, is meeting people where they live. And that's what our, I think that's what our city government is responsible for doing. And it's different there in our area, in Edinburgh and Southdale than it is in the western parts of Edina. But finding out what that is and doing that, I think, is really critical. And I didn't hear that addressed in this. How are we going to keep those services? How are all those bus stops getting cleared of all the snow, so that people can get from the sidewalk out to the bus without having to climb over five feet of snow? We don't, we're not grappling with that yet. It's a tough problem. But we've got huge things we need to do to make it easy for people to live every day in this community. And the more people we get in our densely populated area of Southdale, the bigger that issue is going to be. So let's be comprehensive about this as we think about this. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Rigby.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Hovland, council members and city staff. My name is John Carlson. I live at 4433 Ellsworth Drive. I am very impressed by this document. It's very aspirational. It starts to put a very difficult topic into almost a picture book form, so you can start to visualize what the future has the potential for us. It's so aspirational, it leads me to ask the question, is it affordable? And I think one of the things that the city needs to do, get help doing, is to maybe go to the other cities and find out how did they finance everything that they're doing in their cities there? What did Seattle do? What did Portland do? The other cities that you went to that's there. I trust there won't be that significant a reliance on public subsidies, but I can imagine there will be some on this, of course. I want to just emphasize the point that Mr. Guberud made about the vehicles on the West Promenade. If you look at the design guidance, it originally says here, "The promenades on the east and west side of the district create movements for pedestrians and bicyclists," does not mention cars. If you go and look on page 17 in the back, talking about transitions and connections, it says, "Keeping traffic out of the adjacent single-family neighborhoods is essential." And I think that what was originally the Wunneuf and is now is a shared street, is more and more becoming a frontage road along the west side of France. And that's going to generate traffic, trying to avoid France and use the frontage road to get to some sort of location along the area there. I'm not in favor of that. I think vehicles should not be put on there. I'd love to see that be similar to the Centennial Lakes path that goes, that's been hugely successful. I mentioned to the planning committee, and I'll just mention it here, that, and I think McJohnson has always mentioned this too, that this document is very heavily residential-oriented. We need places for people to work, just as much. So where is the retail opportunities, the commercial opportunities, and have we shortchanged them in this document or not? Lastly, typology 1A shows good transition, especially for the 7200, 7250 building. The original proposal was exactly what's in this plan. I just hope in the long run it ends up to conform to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council, city staff. I'd like to thank the Southdale District Plan Working Group and their consultants for these excellent transformative design guidelines that will move us from the 1950s into the 21st century. What I love best about these guidelines is that they are based on ground-level human experience and intended to both build and sustain community. Big picture, they represent a cultural paradigm shift from our highly individualistic, competitive, "I win, you lose" way of looking at the world, which isn't working for us very well, by the way, towards a vision of community that recognizes our interconnection and interdependence, a vision of public realm, a democratic people's space, that both shapes and is shaped by everyday human interaction at the ground level. I was excited when I first read it, because it reminds me of the environment I experienced when I arrived in Sweden in the 1970s. My husband and I lived in a newly-built suburb of Stockholm. This entire suburb was a series of winding and weaving neighborhoods, separated by small wooded areas, walking and biking paths, a huge public park, shopping centers, and public gardens. I walked and biked for all our basic needs, and this goes to services in every streetroom. I walked to my primary physician, my prenatal care and well-baby clinics, the childcare center, my children's preschool program. I walked to the grocery store, the drugstore, the post office, coffee shops, and a couple of restaurants. And by the way, I noticed again last summer, or biked, I noticed again last summer the absence of obesity in the now very diverse Swedish population. In the suburb where we live, buses connected us with the university where my husband worked and with downtown Stockholm in about 15 minutes. We lived there for 12 years on a very modest income, both working, two small children, and we never needed a private car. I describe this because it's a built environment that mirrors an equitable society committed to the common good and environmental sustainability. That is the vision of these experience guidelines. Thank you again, working group and consultants, for your careful work, your caring vision, and your courage. I urge acceptance, approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to testify regarding this proposed adoption? All right. Hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion, second to close the public hearing, discussion. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried? Aye, opposed, carried. Mr. Johnson, would you come back up, please? And I think I'm looking at a hard copy of page 20 in that room, Street Room Typology 1A, which deals primarily with that, at least in the colored portion of it, what we describe as the Wernhof with respect to 7200, 7250. The concern is expressed both by Mr. Carlson and Mr. Gubert about that shared sort of street environment between motor vehicles and pedestrian, pedestrians and bicycles. There is a notion of an east-west promenade that would extend beyond 7200, 7250, I think. So could you explain why, in this particular circumstance, you're suggesting a Wernhof or a shared street between motor vehicles, between motorized and non-motorized movements? And maybe that wouldn't apply somewhere else on the, on the north-south promenade, the west promenade, so-called?
Mayor Haveland, the way in which we imagine this to work is that, first of all, parking should be underground and should not be on the street. Access to parking should be off the primary east-west streets, not off of the Wernhof. Or if it is, it's immediately off the Wernhof, so you go into parking right away. So what that means is that the only kind of traffic should be drop-off, pickup, delivery, that sort of thing, so that it's a minimal approach to how we normally see a street. So, again, the more pedestrians that you see walking in this street, the slower vehicles will be, and I think it has to be textured that way as well. Generally, Wernhofs do not have curbs, they have bollards, they have lots of trees, they have all sorts of things going on. That makes it difficult for a car to just race through. So parking, getting it off the main street underground right away, not in the center, and that was one of the comments that we made on 7200, 7250, they drug the parking all the way into the site, which shouldn't happen, and if you do have parking underneath the building, it should come directly off France and then back onto France. And so those are the kinds of rules, I think, that you would want to have, or way of talking about what's really essential about a mixed pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular street.
Mr. Carlson called it a frontage road, colloquially called it a frontage road. Would you distinguish between what your concept is of the Wernhof or the group's concept of the Wernhof and a frontage road?
Yeah. Frontage road is a way to get access on and off of France Avenue or on and off freeways. There are all kinds of frontage roads that take you through places. We don't imagine this to be a frontage road because it's, because its nature is, you know, every 200 feet or so, there's an intersection that has corners, that has hopefully public facilities, that could be part of what might be the community room in that particular building or in that locale. Those are all retail, and that should wrap around to, you know, off of France, onto the primary east-west boulevard, and wrap a little bit into that street. But the other way of seeing the street, the Wernhof, is that it's really part of the neighborhood. It's the front door to many residents that might live along that street. We'd expect townhouses to be accessed off of that. So now, if you imagine that you're driving down a street in which there are townhouses and stoops and people coming and going out of their front doors, so that changes the character of what we would consider a frontage road to a Wernhof. The frontage road would have none of that and would be at 35, 35, 40 miles an hour speed limit. We expect this to be 15, 20 at the most, but probably 15.
One of the other comments by Mr. Bigby was, he's been studying this concept called Strong Towns, which is a concept whereby people facilitate people being able to meet each other where they live. And he was concerned about mobility issues being adequately addressed, and primarily, I think, in our climate, snow removal, ice removal, managing some of those things so that regardless of season, people could have that opportunity to meet others where they live. Your plan doesn't deal with that, I don't think, but maybe you could, maybe if you have a comment on that notion, which is an important factor, appreciate your input.
One of the things about the streets that is sort of the nature of the linear quality of most of the district running north and south is, is all the promenades, the central promenade, you know, where we want to connect through the heart of the district, and the east and west promenades are north-south streets, which means from a daylight perspective, if you keep enough shadow off of them, they're going to, they're going to melt snow faster, they're going to stay cleaner longer in terms of the kind of weather we have. If we don't have curbs, then you're really cleaning the whole street, and so, and if, again, what we want to be able to see is that there's, when the whole street is clean, then pedestrians will walk down the middle of the street if they need to, traffic is slower again. All of those things come with the kind of street, the nature of the street that we're thinking of having on those east-west streets. Any sidewalk in the district should be able to be plowed effectively, which means it has to be wide enough then to get a plow down or, you know, a rotating broom across it. So we're always looking at 12-foot wide streets, we're always, or sidewalks, we're always looking at Wernhofs that are 60 feet curved, you know, building to building. So there's lots of opportunity to do this in a way that really accommodates pedestrians and ADA accessibility.
Good. Other council members have other questions they picked up on or issues they picked up and they want to visit?
I just wanted to follow up on the snow removal comment. I think it was actually in the bigger document, there was reference to sort of the, a little bit more of that operational side of things. It wouldn't be certainly in the design experience guidelines. This is a very specific targeted document, so there is, and I would assume, I haven't read through the whole comp plan, but if you really want to get into that, I'm assuming when you get to transportation and to some of those other chapters, they also address that side of it.
That's correct.
Good. Member Anderson.
Thank you. Just a couple of questions while you're here. There was a question about the financing of the project, and that might be of interest to people who are here or are watching this tonight, because since brought up, be a good time to respond to it. And then maybe just a comment on the promenades and limiting activity on the promenades.
So, Councilman Anderson, I think that, you know, from a financial point of view, that I would imagine that, you know, over time, that density obviously is going to help in terms of increasing the tax base on all of those properties, which if managed the way in which, you know, good cities have done, that tax base then increases the ability to do more things in the public realm and to support the public realm needs. It also means that for the landowners, the value of the property is also increasing. And so that, together with how we manage affordability and other things, become the balance sheet for how we might then look at how development really does get done in the district. And so those are all measurements that we should be looking at and how that can be accomplished. And using the best developers around will find what those tools are and how those tools can be effective in helping, you know, create a really robust district from the point of view of taxes to avoid TIF financing and other things, but also to be able to support the kinds of things that the whole city of Edina would like to see in their neighborhoods and in all the districts that, that are, make up the Edina, city of Edina. What was? Promenades. So promenades, again, to me are, there are different kinds. The central promenade that we imagine coming from, you know, Fred Richards Park, going east, you know, to Centennial Lakes, and then eventually going to Struckhour Park, is really about pedestrians. It's the heart of the district. It needs to be really made for pedestrians, it needs to always serve pedestrians and bicyclists. That's its reason for being. The other two promenades are really different in that they are parts of a working neighborhood. And what we first thought about the promenades is a way of getting people out and into, you know, the street rooms and the activities that happen, but it was really about transition. And you can imagine there might be on one of those promenades, a place where you take your laundry, there might be like a small shop that you go to pick up, you know, sandwiches, and you want those accessible in a number of different ways. So it's those neighborhood services that you find in that seam between France Avenue and the promenade, like the west promenade, and that's, that seam is really important to serve the neighborhoods. When you get onto France, you get into a different kind of retail mix of things, and it's going to be more citywide or regional, and that's not where you're going to find, or people are not going to put their, you know, a laundry or some other service like that. They'll want it where it's a little bit more accessible off the main and where the rent's a little cheaper, too. So that's how we saw those as really the kind of level of service coming out of that scene between neighborhood and the greater Southdale district where there's a lot more heavy retail being used.
Good. Member Sutton.
Just following up on that point, would you, would it be inconsistent with the vision that you're, that you're imagining to have occasional interruptions that vehicles couldn't go straight through? So you might have a block, you know, we're, we're thinking about it in the context of 7200 and 7250 from Gallagher to 72nd Street, but who's to say that half a block north there's bollards that only bicyclists and pedestrians can go through? So there's not going to be this long stretch of being able to drive the length of it to get from one end to the other as an alternative to France Avenue?
I think that's a very good point. That's exactly, exactly correct because the notion of the street comes back to its serviceability as a place where you need to get a car in or you need to get a truck in to take stuff out like garbage and then things like that, but it's incidental, it's not all the time, and that's, that means you don't have to have a continuous street and which would take back to the service road idea, it would take that completely off the table of ever having any viability to it. You can't drive straight through.
I would just, I want to piggyback one more time on that because I think it's really, it's kind of a great conversation, because I think people really do want to truly understand what these promenades mean to them. And I thought Mr. Carlson's comparison, feeling it's more, it could be a frontage road instead of a promenade. The way I would define a frontage road is it's to get a vehicle from one point to another as fast as possible so they can then access the primary artery, which in this case would be France Avenue. Whereas a promenade, it's all about the pedestrian speed and scale, and if you allow automobiles, they have to conform to the pedestrian environment rather than vice versa.
And the automobile is the incidental.
Right. That, so on occasion, the automobile can join in that experience, but it's not about the automobile at all. And I thought you described that pretty well, and I think this notion of, it really had me thinking about, on the 7200, 7250 project, which is an interesting project because it's come along with these, you know, about the same time as the guidelines, that if you imagine there's a problem with too many people coming onto the promenade to get into the parking, which is, if I recall, is, is along the east-west street to France from the promenade, promenade, that's where your entrance into the two parking ramps is, that if, if people were shortcutting, you could simply put some bollards there and you've just solved your problem because now they have to come off France, go back on France. But those are the things, when you don't have the built-in curbs and gutters and all that, you can actually adapt that space and, and, you know, as you go along. And, and, you know, at least we were talking about even a fountain-like element in the middle of that, of that promenade, well, that's certainly not a frontage road element, right? You wouldn't put a fountain or an obstacle in the middle of a frontage road. So I think, I believe this whole promenade concept can really work, and I, and I really like your comment about, it doesn't have to be continuous, you don't have to get four blocks in a vehicle, and I think that's a really strong point.
One other part of that was that it's a way to also manage traffic into the neighborhoods. And if you close it off at 70th, 70, yeah, 70th, if you close it off there, you're not going to get any of the traffic that might incidentally come from the promenade into the neighborhood then. And so it's a way of managing neighborhood traffic as well as, you know, the kind of activities that you want to have on the promenade itself. And, and if you do put a fountain in the middle, it's a way to get a car wash every once in a while for free, right?
Good. All right. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you.
We've been asked by the Planning Commission and by staff to entertain a motion to approve the Design Experience Guidelines for the Greater Southdale District as recommended by the Planning Commission. Any further discussion, otherwise entertain a motion to adopt the Design Experience Guidelines for the Greater Southdale District?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, with regard to the adoption of the Design Experience Guidelines for the Greater Southdale District? Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I just wanted to say one last time that this was a phenomenal document, along with the other document, but this is, I mean, you just read through it, and I just smile when I'm reading it because it's just so elegantly done, and I just really, really appreciate that.
And to just, you know, not only is it a good planning document, but it's an organic planning document that was created by members of our community, and so thanks to them for their work on it.
Other comments?
Well, the, the origin, I think, of this really started with 7200. And, and the evolution of ideas about what could happen with that property and the adjoining 7250 property, it's been interesting to see all of the, all of the visionary work that has gone on while that project has evolved. It's really been interesting to watch.
Thank you. Member Anderson, any comment? I think this will be a document that gets admired and used by many other communities, so thanks to the entire team, especially as Member Sutton said, thank you to our residents. All right, we've got a motion, second, no further discussion, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, carried. Thank you. You too, Mr. Cornejo. We're going to move into the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda, and the first matter in front of us this evening is potential approval of a revised policy on new multifamily affordable housing. And Stephanie Hawkinson is with us this evening, our Affordable Housing Development Manager. Welcome, Ms. Hawkinson.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight I am bringing before you the proposed changes to the affordable housing policy. Please note that the first change is in the title, which states that this policy is for new multifamily developments. I think this is perhaps one of the most important changes to this policy. This policy was not intended to be a comprehensive affordable housing implementation plan. Instead, it is designed to address the multifamily new construction that is occurring in the city and to encourage the inclusion of affordable housing units within those developments. As those developers will be seeking APUD and/or financial assistance, there's an opportunity for us to get some affordable housing units. Nor is this policy intended to fulfill the goal established by the Metropolitan Council. The policy was initially adopted when our affordable housing goal was 212 units. The goal is now 1,220 units. It's not intended that by including affordable housing within market rate developments that the goal will be achieved. Rather, the policy is to compel market rate developers to include affordable housing units within their developments without being so onerous that developments cease altogether. This policy is also not designed to address the preservation of NOA properties nor of single-family homeownership. Those two affordable housing areas, all very important, together with new multifamily housing development, are addressed in the proposed housing chapter of the comprehensive plan. So I know there's been questions raised that this doesn't cover it all. I don't think it was ever intended to cover it all. I think this was really intended for new multifamily I think this was really intended for new multifamily development that we saw occurring and we wanted to make sure that we at least addressed the need for affordable housing, not to be the be-all and end-all, but to at least assist. So we've already gone through this policy at our work session, and so I don't know if you want me to, for the record, go through it again, or if any questions have arisen since we met last, two weeks ago.
I think you've done a good job of providing us with both a redlined version and a clean version. And so I've looked at the redlined version, I'm sure others have as well. And are there questions? Maybe we should handle it that way. Are there questions with respect to the meeting we had or some of the proposed drafting that Ms. Hawkinson has in the redlined version of the policy? Manager Neil, did you have a comment?
Well, I do, and I don't want to get ahead of Councilmember Brindle, but we did get a significant rewrite from Councilmember Brindle today. So how do you want to, do you want to address that right now?
In, in reading over and over the redlined version and being a technical writer, I almost couldn't help myself in, to try to organize the document. So that was really what was, what it was intended. But there were a couple of things that, that stuck out to me. For example, in looking at requesting exemptions or requesting financial assistance from the city, it was referenced at, it included city council approval. But our practice and the way we operate is to seek a recommendation from the HRA and then approval from the city council. So that is an example of something that I thought ought to go in here since that's how we operate. And so, but then in the paragraph about requesting exemptions, approval from the city council based on alternative public purpose, I don't know what that means. And what's alternative public purpose? And how does that relate to requesting an exemption or requesting financial assistance?
Mayor, councilmembers, I think an alternative public purpose could be if there were a development that served, that was 100% that serves severely disabled. That might be another public purpose and perhaps affordability nor the buy-in made sense in that case. It was allowing the council and/or the HRA to look at if there's another goal that the city has that, we may not know what that is right now, but it was a way to give you some flexibility.
Okay. All right. It was just, it kind of left it open-ended for me and I needed to, to have some context in that. Let's see. So a lot, a lot of what I provided was housekeeping. But looking back, as far as total buy-in, we did get an email from a resident that, that thought buy-out was a better term, but buy-in technically is what this is because you buy into something to support it and be part of carrying forward a decision or a plan. And, and so I agree in the buy-in terminology. There is reference to a, an acronym of AHO. What is that?
Affordable Housing Opportunities.
It is? That's what it is? Okay, we just need to spell that out. And then finally, I guess the last one is the Affordable Housing Guidelines for implementing this policy can be found in the Inclusionary Housing Policy Program Guide? Isn't that technically what it's called? Or is it the Housing Program Guide?
It's, Mayor, councilmembers, it is the Inclusionary, the title of that, which could change, is the Inclusionary Housing Program Guide. That is the title of it.
Okay.
That was recently approved. It does not mean that that can't change.
And is that our document? Or is that a state document? Who, what's the origin of that document?
Mayor, councilmembers, the origin of the document is the Affordable Housing Connections. They do third-party compliance monitoring in a lot of our neighboring communities. And so there is some commonality of language with other communities. Other communities don't call it the Affordable Housing Policy, they call it the Inclusionary Housing Policy. You all made a decision to call it the Affordable Housing Policy, but the guide is similar between our community and our neighboring communities that they do compliance because some of the developers have projects in more than, not just Edina, they may have, still have in St. Louis Park and Bloomington and elsewhere in Minneapolis. And so there's trying to create some cohesiveness for them to ease confusion. We did, at a meeting this fall, add some unique elements to it that pertain to our city only, but the title of it was consistent with their document, which was as stated here.
Okay, great. All right. Those, those really are all, all my questions. I think if there's anything that is a change to a process, it is including the recommendation from the HRA as well as the approval of the city council. Otherwise, I think it's mostly housekeeping.
Other comments, questions from councilmembers?
I guess I have some, thank you.
Yes, Member Anderson.
Thank you. Just a couple, they're blocking and tackling questions more than anything else. On, on paragraph five, we're extending it 20 years from 15 as our guideline. So I guess, it's a question. Is that problematic in terms of, are we, are we more or less committing now to TIF funding for virtually every multifamily project that comes forward? The monetized tax credits extend for 15 years, and so that's one of the, I think, driving forces between a 15-year affordability factor in the past, not part of this new policy. And so I, it begins, it makes me wonder, is that, now, are we just jumping in here and saying this is what it has to be? And Director Nundorf, I think, mentioned that in the event that a, a project receives TIF funding, then, then we move it to 25 years. I don't know if that has been standard practice consistently, but he made that point here, I believe, on Thursday. So I, that's, that's a question.
Mayor, councilmembers, no, that does not indicate that there is TIF financing involved. It's purely that right now the policy, whether or not there's any financing involved, is 15 years and we want, and there's been some interest in extending it. If low-income housing tax credits are very, very, very difficult, in fact, I don't think it really even occurs in Minnesota, to be used in market rate developments where there's 20% tax credit, 80% market rate. I know that happens on the coast. I cannot find a developer that will do that in Minnesota. And so, and with tax credits, it's initially 15 years, but there's this mandatory 15-year extended use. So it's 30 years. So the 20 years is just that. It's just extending it from 15 to 20 without making it too onerous.
Okay. Then last, the second one is on paragraph six, the one that follows there. And so what we're doing here is we're, we're moving, any new-for-sale or owner-occupied developments remain affordable for 30 years. And I'm just, I'm just wondering how you arrived at 30 as opposed to the 20 here?
Mayor, councilmembers, this predates me, the 30 years. That was when this was initially adopted. 30 years for ownership like condominiums is the traditional term of a mortgage. And with the Come Home to Edina program, if there is a second mortgage involved, the term is the same as the first mortgage. And I believe that is where the 30 years came from.
Predates me, too. But it's just the, I guess, the comment I want to make, just with familiarity in the industry, I just wonder, are we going to be encouraging ownership models in the future? Is that, is it, is, is 30 years of affordability preclusive to development, to condo development?
Mayor, councilmembers, I don't know when the last condo development, condo development has slowed down generally. There has been some murmuring that there could be an uptick just because there's not a lot of supply in that. I don't know, I can't predict what effect this would have on potential developers. It seems to be fairly consistent across communities, but we don't have a case study.
It just, it just leads me to speculate that we, we kind of move down, any new condo development town, at this point in town, in time, just means almost inevitably that they use the buy-in option. It's, it seems to me like that's what would happen in an ownership model because you begin to move to upscale as opposed to more modestly priced condo development. That's all, it's just a, it's, it's a speculation. And I do think that it can limit the market because you're looking to kind of a specialized market at a certain point in time, which could be low-income seniors, it could be some other type of ownership model, but it's a, it's a restricted market. And so as you look to the future, because we are becoming more dense and we look to multifamily development, so is there an ownership model that we can anticipate and engage on that we can encourage that maybe isn't so specialized? And so then I just wonder about that, that recommendation.
Mayor, councilmembers, without going too much down a rabbit hole, the seminars at recently, when they were talking about condominium development, were more indicating that there may be more of a market for modestly priced condos, that the really high luxury condominiums, you have to put your down payment two years in advance because you have to presell 50% before you can get your financing and, and that people in that, in the luxury market, since apartments are so luxurious and the amenities vary and the next one down that gets built has even more fancy amenities like indoor bowling alley or, you know, a pool on the rooftop or whatever, that they're seeing that people in that market are actually opting to rent in luxury apartments because they can move in right away without having to wait two years for it to be built, and then they're in a year lease and they can go to the next shiny bobble. And so that the condominium market for the luxury is, it, the foreshadowing is uncertain. There's divided debate on where that's going anyway. And that where there is a demand would be more the modest level condominiums. I'm not an expert in that field, I'm parroting what I heard at a seminar, but that seems to be the feeling.
That prompt any other questions? Comments, Member Sutton?
So I think, Member Anderson raises a couple of good points. I like the blocking and tackling analogy and, and I think, but I think it goes back to Ms. Hawkinson, what you said in your remarks, which is, I think there's some folks who are misunderstanding what we're trying to do with this. Back in 2015, we adopted the first version of it because we saw the market changing on us and we didn't want to miss the opportunity to try to inject some affordability into it. And now we continue to morph as we see changes. And you've done some great things in here in terms of the enforceability, in terms of being more specific about number of units as opposed to the square feet, what do we mean by 60, you know, 20%? And some of the mechanics, which we've benefited from having you onboard, just trying to figure out, how do we enforce this? How does, how does somebody know who to report to, what kind of compliance, all those kinds of things? So I think the 20-year term is a bit of a shot in the dark and we'll have to kind of see how it goes. And the same with the 30-year on the ownership, we'll have to see how it goes. And if it, if it needs to be modified, it needs to be modified and, and that we need to kind of continue to put our stake in the ground and, and see where we're going. I think this is an improvement over what we have. And as you mentioned, this is going to be part of a broader housing strategy that will be our housing chapter in the, in the conference of plans. So, so I'm really pleased with it as it is. I thank you for your, for your work on it.
Would you care to segue right into a motion?
I don't want to preempt.
Well, we can go into discussion mode, too.
Sure.
So, so I would move approval of the policy as amended.
All right. We've got the motion to approve the revised policy on new multifamily affordable housing by Member Sutton. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. Member Fisher.
So I agree with Member Anderson. If I have, my biggest concern in this revised policy is going to the 20 years. And while I, I would like more than 20 years, I just, I'm a little worried that we don't know, we don't have the science to figure out where the breaking point is, where everyone wins. And by everyone wins, I think you hit on it. It's like, if we have to turn around and finance every one of these with TIF, well, let's just make that plan and go forward. But at the same time, I think we could, you know, we're going to learn a little bit moving forward here. I, I think what I would predict is we're going to see more of the buy-in proposals, and that's going to tell us that we might have pushed a little further. And so that's an okay problem to have. What I worry about is if they just don't show up, right? There's like, enough, we'll go develop someplace else. But I'm willing to give this a try. It's just, that's, you know, that's my area of concern.
Manager Neil.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, and I think it's important to think about the risk of not adopting this at some point, too. And we've discussed, that, we've discussed that, too, that there are some improvements in this policy that we'd like to put in place, we'd like to get into the marketplace before we start getting a number of proposals. And we think that, we think that there are some proposals probably out there waiting for us to get this sorted out. And we'd like to get it sorted out in the manner that, you know, that you support before, before proposals start to come into us and then they, they get to come in under the old policy. So that's what we, we'd like to do. We think it's important to move it forward.
Which is exactly where we ran into when we first adopted this.
Exactly.
Some folks saying, wait a minute, you know, when we got our application, it was before you had adopted it and so.
All right. We've got a motion second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Member Brindle.
Thank you. I would like where, where we talk about requesting exemptions or requesting financial assistance and where it says, approved by the city council, I would like it to say, seek recommendation from the Edina HRA and approval from the Edina City Council. Again, because that is how we operate.
Where is that?
I think that's what you mentioned earlier. Manager Neil.
I was just going to add that Councilmember Brindle did give us a number of, of technical edits and improvements to make this more, a better, more readable, I think, for, for anyone, actually. So we would propose to incorporate some of those after the council has approved this. As long as they don't have a material impact on the policy, we would do that. So if that's okay.
Yeah, I mean, it is just housekeeping. It doesn't, it doesn't change the policy, it just, I think, strengthens it if nothing else.
Well, why don't we make those changes? They don't make a material difference. Recirculate the policy in its revised form and then we can all look at it again. And then we could, someone can decide if they want to have it be brought back up on the agenda. I doubt that'll happen, but we can do it that way.
If, as long as they're not material to the policy or anything that, that our city attorney has approved, well, I think we can consider it to be the document that you've approved. But there are things like how we've, how we've, the acronyms that we've used and how we've hyphenated certain words and, and just improving the general readability of the policy, I think is important.
All right, very good. We've got a motion second. We've had discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Aye, opposed, carried. And then, Ms. Huckinson, you've got one more matter with us this evening, and that is to get us in a legal, a good legal posture with respect to this trust fund notion.
Correct.
So, why don't you explain that?
I, with the help of our attorney, crafted an ordinance to formally create the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. When the buy-in notion was first floated by, it was discussed and generally understood that those funds would be set aside, and earmarked, as it were, for future and affordable housing endeavors. And in fact, in the Finance Department, that is what they're doing. There's a special restricted account. But the state, in bills that are going forward this year, talk about having funds available for cities to have affordable housing trust funds. And since ours isn't formally called that, it functions as that, but is not, there's no ordinance saying that that is, in fact, what it is, we would not be eligible for those type of funding. In addition, it just seems like it codifies what the intent is of those buy-in funds.
Questions for Ms. Huckinson?
I do. As a trust, as a trust fund, how does it operate differently than the way it's handled now?
Mayor, council members, I don't believe it does.
Okay, it's just naming it.
Naming it.
Okay.
I think that there's a state statute.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
There is.
I don't know if, Mr. Kudus, you want to comment on that or not, but it sounds like we're bringing ourselves into compliance with state statute, clearly.
There's this statute, it's quoted in the ordinance 462(c)(16), that tells you how you're supposed to set up an affordable trust fund, and we're just complying with the statute.
All right. Yeah, that was my point. It just doesn't...
It's a practical matter, and it probably won't change anything.
Okay, great, thank you.
I've got a question on section 2-792. It says, "The Affordable Housing Trust Fund shall be funded by total buy-in funds from developers." And then, it says, "Other sources of funding may include, but are not limited to." And then, you've got a litany of other sources of funds. And of course, the reason I started thinking about this was the G, Tax Increment Pooled Funds, I was thinking about the Southdale District. But it just made me think about, you have this definitive statement that the Affordable Housing Trust Fund is going to be funded by total buy-in funds, and oh, by the way, it could also be funded this way. So, I'm just wondering why we just don't list all the different ways it could be funded, as opposed to total buy-in funds sort of leading the way, making it look like that's the primary source, when it may or may not be the primary source. We've actually got several different potential sources for funds that would go into the trust fund.
Mayor, we could simply say the buy-in would be A, and change all the others, the lettering of all the others, that'd be fine.
So, just, yeah, we've got A through G now, we go through A through H.
Yeah, we'll make that change.
Okay. Anybody else see anything else in the document? All right, we've got a change proposed by the city attorney. With that change having been made, is there a motion to...
So moved.
Okay, this is on first reading? You want waiver or second reading on this, or you want it on first reading basis?
Can we? First reading.
First reading? Okay. So, we've got a motion, do we have a motion to approve the first reading of ordinance 2019-07, Establishing an Affordable Housing Trust Fund? Member Staunton moved it. Member Brindle seconds. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Thank you, Ms. Huckinson. Doing some great work for our community.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I think when we get to council and manager comments, we can talk about our meeting with Representative Markwart, the head of the Tax Committee, on our TIF matter that's in front of the legislature. I guess that's a simplified way to put it. Now, we have, we are not going to take up C, 8C, so we're on 8D. We need to talk about this legal matter we've been involved with, with some of the neighbors in the White Oaks neighborhood. We have a decision, I think, from the district court, and we've got the ability to go into closed session to discuss that decision of the district court. And we'll go upstairs to the community room. But I need a motion to close the meeting of the City Council, as permitted by Minnesota Statute 13d.05 subdivision 3, for the purpose of discussing the White Oaks, C, Birchcrest, A, and Countryside B Street Reconstruction Special Assessment Appeal Update. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
Mr. Mayor, before we do that, can I just ask, are we planning on coming back into open session down here?
Yeah.
And then, we'll do, are we going to do council comments and manager comments, then?
Yeah.
All right.
Unless we, unless you want to...
Unless we do them now.
Do that now.
We can modify the agenda.
Yeah.
And then, we could just say we're not, well, we're not going to conduct any more business, other than come into open session to adjourn.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that idea. Let's hold on that matter going into closed session. So, do we have any aviation correspondence petitions? Everything's on the agenda? Or everything's on the dais, I mean?
Mm-hmm.
All right. And then, Aviation Noise Update, Member Brindle, anything to report there?
Nothing new. There's a meeting this month.
Council comments, Member Anderson? Go Hornets? I know you got your Go Hornets button.
Tonight's the night to say so. And I do think, somebody would have to Google this, and maybe one of the students would do that real quickly, can find out whether or not this would be an all-time first, if both the girls and the boys win the state tournament, state hockey tournament, on the same, in the same year. I don't think that's been done, but it may have been. But if, in fact, that occurs, that would be three state championships in a row, because the swim team won the weekend before.
Yeah.
Fairly impressive.
Yeah.
All right, Member Brindle?
Thank you. Let me go down here to... Okay, so, there is, in the consent agenda tonight, there was a Green Corps agreement. And I just wondered if that Green Corps agreement, if we can find out whether that would allow for research into the Biohaven concept, to determine a way to improve Edina's lakes. We talked about cleaning up, the efforts to clean up Lake Cornelia earlier, and whether Biohaven can be an idea that could be employed as part of that. There are two advisory communications in our agenda that we are receiving from the Human Rights and Relations Commission tonight. And so, just calling everyone's attention to that, one is language for a proposed resolution to support adding an ERA amendment to the Minnesota Constitution. The ERA amendment has never yet been ratified in the U.S. Constitution. There aren't enough states behind it. We need 38. We have 37. And we're hoping Virginia will be the 38th. But the other advisory communication is Title IX. And so, so those are things that the council would act on at a future meeting, because each of those advisory communications contain proposed resolutions from that commission.
Good. Member Staunton?
Nothing for me, thanks.
Member Fisher?
Nothing for me.
Just a couple of quick things for me. Manager Neal and I had lunch yesterday with the new Richfield mayor and the new Richfield city manager. It was enjoyable, get acquainted, although I know the manager quite well from her time on the tab, representing the northwest quadrant of the metro area. And then, today, Manager Neal and I met with Paul Markwart, who is representative at the state legislature, who's head of the Tax Committee, about our bill concerning our TIF authority to make the length of the district and the ability to spend within the length of that time coterminous, so that we don't have to create the funding, or create the obligations by the end of this year. We can make our decisions within the next two-year period, when the district is going to die a natural death, I guess, statutory death, on December 31 of 2021. So, we had a very positive meeting with him. He likes the bill. He's a former mayor of Dover, understands TIF, and thought it was a real solid project. So, I think it's not going to be going into any more hearings.
No.
It's going to be going into the omnibus tax bill. We think we're in pretty good shape on the Senate side, at least according to our advisors at Merzley and Kramer. And we'll testify there when we need to. Manager Neal will probably do that. So, that was a really positive outcome today. And then, just last Saturday, I got invited by a young Somali gentleman I know to go to the Swearing Inn and the grand opening of the Ethiopian consulate. It's the first African country to open a consulate in the Twin Cities. There's 40,000 Ethiopians residing in the Twin Cities metropolitan area. And the Ambassador, Ambassador Debele was here, Ambassador to the U.S. The new Consul General is being seated. I don't recall her name. Their office is in that building on 280 and University Avenue, where the Eganai is, that, I forget what the name of that building is, Colonnade or something, anyway. But it was a really, an exciting event. Melvin Carter did a great job. It's technically St. Paul, right there, even though it feels like Minneapolis. Melvin did a very good job of welcoming them, and the audience was full of Minnesota Ethiopians. And when he talked about Minnesotans are welcoming you here, all of the folks in the audience really cheered, and were proud to be Minnesotans. So, it was a, it was a great way to spend part of the day. And that's it for me. Manager Neal?
I don't have anything tonight.
Okay.
Just, I want the update for the legislative...
All right. And then, so now, we're back to closing the meeting. The City Council is permitted by Minnesota Statute 13d.05 subdivision 3, for discussion purposes of discussing an appeal update on the White Oaks, C, Birchcrest, A, and Countryside B Street Reconstruction Special Assessment matter that we've been in litigation on district court. Is there a motion to close the meeting? Second?
Second.
Motion, second, to close the meeting, discussion. All those in favor, closing the meeting for the purpose stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. We will go into closed session, and we will head upstairs to the community room. When we come back down, we will reopen the meeting, and then we'll adjourn.